Bring the Select Board meeting for September 22nd to order at 7:04. Mr. Newton, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Allison's not in yet.
I can.
Make a motion to approve the agenda for September 22nd, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for September 8th, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. On page one, down paragraph, Harseal made a motion to appoint Amanda Summers. Is this June 20th, not June 30th? That should be changed to the 30th. At the top of page two, it looks like a word's missing. M. Jones will be meeting with Walter Wissler from State Valley Unified next week to make upgrades to the lock system, assuring they are working and to talk about programming key cards. And on the next paragraph, I think the last word in that paragraph should be "it," not "that."
I missed that one, what was it?
Where McClure Construction's second paragraph of the second page, the very last word should be "with it" instead of "with that." On page three, down to the manager's report, go down the third line, "Items two and provided drawing to give," I think "two" should be inserted there, "to them" to be added. Down two more paragraphs, "The representative from Salem Supply came to look at the PTO on the fail mower. It was felt that the mower was engaged while the mower was elevated." I think it should be two words, "and that was the reason why it broke." And the soccer goals down at the bottom. Let's see what I wrote there. Just before, just needs to be installed, it should be, "They just need to be installed." On page four, way to the bottom where Mark Brown is talking, it's the X of the line, the line, it just needs a comma before the "if" to be grammatically correct. And that's all I have.
I have nothing, too.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Welcome, Bob.
Thank you, guys.
Glad you could call in, I knew you were gonna try. Citizens comments, items not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll go to the police report. Oh, Roy, I'm sorry.
I don't see it on the agenda. Will the solid waste district be discussed tonight?
I have no intention of discussing that tonight. Do you have something you want to bring up?
Well, no, I just was at the last meeting and seemed to be put a bit of turmoil on. I was just wondering, Mike was there and was there any report?
Is there anything in your manager's report?
There's nothing that, there's still sorting some stuff out with the attorney, so I'd rather not, I'd wait till they're done before I bring it up. You guys, you guys pretty much know what's going on, but Gary Cutford is the attorney that is working with Rutland County Solid Waste District besides the one that the league appointed, so I'll wait till that gets sugar off before I bring it up. You guys know, there's a lot going on. Brianna Franzone is the only one working right now over there, so it's kind of, they're trying to fill a bookkeeper position temporarily right now.
I know there's things there that have to remain confidential as well. Anything else for citizens' comments? Mary?
Mary McIntyre, Newcastleton, representing Friends of Rec. Told you guys that I would keep you posted on the October 18th fundraiser. Here we are, it's called Fall Night Out. It'll start here at the rec center. Doors will open at 6:30. The music will start at 7:00 PM. The featured band is Aaron, the Aaron Adet Band, and we'll have two opening acts, Table for Two and Sam Loomis, and they're all local performers. And we got a sponsor, Casella's Real Estate is sponsoring the event for us. It's $20 in advance, 25 at the door. Just got the tickets up and rolling, they're now at orders for sale, people can buy them online. The library's going to sell them for us, and it's a 21 and plus event. So, so far, I've just got everything posted on Facebook last night and today, and so far, it's being shared a lot.
Good.
So, I think it's gonna be pretty popular.
Okay, thank you, Mary.
Sorry, please.
Are you, are you done, Mary?
Yeah.
I just wanted to let you know, I spoke to Paul McClure about the electrical, and he knows the date, and he said he would get in here to do what we need to do to make sure that you have power.
Okay, I was gonna call you, and I've been out of town for the last three weeks, so.
No, he, I followed up on him, and he said that he will, he knows the date, and he'll get in here to do work on it so we have power.
And how about the drainage? Has anyone had a chance to look at that corner over here?
No, we just met, we met here today about it, so we're trying to determine what, what the next course of action's gonna be with the schedule of the highway crew. Getting, it's gonna take a little bit to get in here and do this, so.
Okay, so it's a.
It's a scheduling issue right now.
Okay, but it's a potential, it's a project, is that?
Yeah, it will be, it will be explored to try to solve it, because I know that you guys are trying to fundraise for a floor, and putting a floor in when the water's, is an issue, is probably not gonna work, so.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yeah, we met here today about it.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mary. Okay, Chief, you're up.
Okay. It's dark outside already. All right, so y'all got a copy of the report, go through the calls increased, A-61 to 12, August to July, or July, August, toward the end of summer. So, we are still busy, nothing stands out on the calls we're looking at, except our traffic stops increased because we're able to get more enforcement there. There's nothing, you know, huge changes in the numbers I'm looking at.
Excuse me, Chief. Hey, Bob, can you mute your phone? We're picking up the background noise from it. Please and thank you.
Oh, it's totally quiet here. I can, I can do that.
Okay, well, it could be Allison, I guess, because no house is muted, so it could be you, Bob, sorry.
That's okay. I don't really need to worry about that.
Any, any questions on total calls? No questions. Criminal arrest, we did 11 last month, down from five, 16, I think, in July, on the higher end that we ended up doing. We should do it from 10 to 15 using our average. Nothing stands out there. DUIs, drug-related stuff, addition to release, simple assaults, two more. Traffic violations, we're gonna be out because we have more traffic stuff, and it's deep in the 85, around 11. So, the things that we changed down for the calls we serve also include the off-campus housing for students, so that kind of gives us a better reading. So, in August, obviously, that's the beginning of school, so four calls, you can see what they were, two citizens says, pocket questions, people have questions about things, family fight one, and then one sex assault. Any questions on those? No? Okay. Backup, you can see what that is, what was provided, who we backed up. You can see the difference, just one of the couple. Busier because summer, it's always toward, the university's open, starts in August, that's why, you know, some of our calls may have been up a little bit, we had more traffic stops, so, in comparison, if you look at the notes, you know, from August 24, August 23, with the call rates, it was up each year, about 200. Mental health, still a concern, didn't have as many mental health calls this year, this month, but we did have some, trying to keep with that. And transient population, you know, the areas that we have people hanging around, what's going on? Anyway, they have a tendency, obviously, in the war months, to hang over on top of green dump area, we try to get them out of there as soon as possible, if people linger around, like especially after a store closes, stuff like that. Motor vehicle force, that increased, we saw that, we did a Labor Day DUI force me campaign, that time we got a couple DUIs out of that. We've been doing some work with the tolls in the East Crystal Haven, West Crystal Haven areas, we dropped all five radar signs, I think I told you that last month, but they're all up now, all officially. Have you been by them all the way? Seen them? All five?
Not all five, no.
I've been all, oh.
What is on the run? East Hubbard is going south, and it's just before the Anderson Farm, it'll be on the right-hand side if you're going south. Blissville, Rice Willis, Rice Willis has our, we put our mobile one there, right in that little rust area out there, to the middle of Drake Road. That was a hard one to find the spot, because you get up in an area up where there's no shoulder, there's nothing, so we had to put it on either side, up where the barn, or on the other side. And Creek Road. We also, Justin, who's the assistant director for the Castle who Cares, the Castle Community Center found out we, that we pick up food, or Justin and Ed pick up food off this farm in Portman Hill, and they, that's where Castle who Cares get their vegetables and stuff, and some of the meat. So, we started picking up for community center, we set up on every Monday, down in their, in their, in their main room, where vegetables and different things set up, and there's like 20 people that go up there, and they, they love it, it's totally done for past four Instead of getting processed food all the time, you bring some fresh vegetables and meat, and Castle who Cares pays for it. Any questions on that? So, I want to give you update on the whole licensing and vaccination stuff, so we just, I had Mike, the ACL, we wrote, out of the 53 that were left, we cut it down to 40, so last Friday, because I had a huge gap between when I sent the letter and when I'm gonna mail out the tickets. So, I've got all the tickets written, we got 39 of them, and going with a letter that will indicate that they have those 20 days before they have to make a decision to send it into the judiciary bureau to pay $150 for a contestant, or if they, within those 20 days, if they, they license and they get their dogs off the date, dismiss the ticket, pretty, pretty basic. So, it's, so like I told you at the beginning, if we get down to 80% compliance, and just have to do the visitations after that, that Mike can handle that. Still working on the UTV, TV, I had Sarah from Polten get ahold of me, and they've already, they've got the same thing going on down there, so they hit the different groups that are hitting all these towns. So, she sent me her draft, we talked a little bit, I told her I'd made contact with other townships that have those ordinance, so that's still in the process, and I'm hoping to get the traffic ordinance written up by November, so you got, you can have, put it out, and then I get ready to hold on, march down and stuff, and try to figure what, you know, that cap, get it out there, have you look at it and decide if it's good, or have a lawyer look at it, or whatever. Any questions? Comments?
I have no questions, well, just one. You've got 67 plus six, 73, 76 people, 76 violations that are 10 miles an hour or more.
Yeah, if you look at the notes, we got a couple of ones, pretty high speeds.
Yeah, I saw in the notes you had two exceptionally high. I'm just curious where the, where your frequent flyers are? Is that all over town?
Right now, in the summer months, North Road was huge because of the rodeo, and traffic, the summer traffic, people use that road to cut off, Route 30 still was big, both night and day, we were hitting the 40s, that's above the lake coming into the 35 zero area. As a matter of fact, they've always wanted me to go cover the area a lot, we've kind of moved it back, so we got them coming into that before the Crystal.
We park right across from my driveway.
Yeah, that's true. And, yeah, Main Street, not too much, but now we'll start probably getting South Street a little bit more on the, on the straights before you get to, what is that, Metal, Metal Lane, that's traffic there. They answer your question, do they?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, 89 and 30 is five, it's 35.
Yeah, I appreciate the effort.
That's a nice time. And there's still people called, you know, we, you know, we're trying to balance these out. I haven't heard any complaints on the speed signs, I don't know how that's, if it's affecting those areas, nobody said anything, usually people call me or let me know, I ain't chief, you know, people flying by my house, and like that, really haven't heard too much, a couple.
There was a couple of, you know, triaxle dump trucks that were moving a little fast on right well.
I went down there, I had sent the other officer down there the next that Friday. I don't know, where are they going?
That's, the offender that's most noticeable is a construction company out of Whitehall, and.
Are they going to Fairhaven?
I don't know where, no, they're, it's about an hour in between trips, so they might be going somewhere into New York, I don't know.
No, I mean, like, where are they, why are they coming that way?
They're heading for Route 4.
Interesting.
So, they go down, you know, they go down River Street, and then take a left on Main Street, and go up Prospect Street to get onto Route 4. Well, a well-placed phone call to the receptionist at the construction company seems to have slowed the guy down.
Oh, good.
So, we'll see if.
What's the name of the?
Yeah, I know who the construction company is, and I'm not gonna share that right now.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But I did, and I think I made you aware of who the construction company was. But anyways, I, you know, had somebody else actually call, another resident in the area, and voiced a complaint, and it seems to have slowed them down.
Good.
Because there is, you know, well over 50 miles an hour.
Well, that's, you get a huge vehicle moving, it's, it's.
You know, and it's just not safe to, it's not safe to drive a truck loaded like that 50 miles an hour down River Street.
Absolutely.
Or any road, any road like that.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I got.
Anything else? Mike?
I'm good. I got, I want to meet with you about those speed signs, but nothing, nothing crazy.
Okay.
How many speed cards we got now? Just one?
What do you?
The portable ones, the mobile speed cards.
Yeah, two, really, we still, we still have two, I'm not including the castle, that's, that's junk, we're not.
Yeah, yeah, I realize that one's had seen better days.
We have two, we have the original one, when I first came here, the one that stretched, built the frame for, and then the other one that came in, that was board built, and then we have the five permanent ones.
Right.
So, I think we got six out.
Yeah, there's one up on Steso.
Oh, seven, forgot about that one.
Oh, that's right, yeah, I did see that.
I think that is our, our real light one, portable.
Yes, this one.
Yes.
Thank you, Pete.
Yeah, thank you.
Talk about electrical in the salt shed, Mike. We've all seen his recommendation, right?
Yes, do you have any questions on, about what that's paying for, I guess, at this point? Or what that, I mean, not paying for, what it covers? Because we took out a lot of stuff. So, basically, the, the estimate's gonna bring power from the pole into the building, so there's a panel on the outside and the inside, there's a couple outlets, and there's two lights on the inside, and then we're putting solar lights up on the outside, so we took them out of the bid, it's just so expensive. So, we found some 9,000 lumen solar lights that are floodlights, and they'll at least.
Be something.
It'll light the area up enough to build a sea, so, so that's where we're at, this was kicked around, McClure Construction didn't want anything to do with it, Dan Gray finally threw in the towel, and the, the individual out of Polten, kind of, that didn't work out, so Stebbins was the, the solid person throughout the process that came back to us with something that met our, our goal, and falls within the budget.
They're a reputable firm.
Yeah. And they, they've bid on stuff for the town before, and just have never been awarded the bid. Typically, they're, they do really good work, but they're, usually cost more, but in this case, it worked out, and it falls within that. This was all part of that money that was given to the, for the salt shed project, so there was fence, there was a fence, a gate, I mean, and the lighting, and so we got away with the, the gate is gonna be something they're gonna do on their own, and that, it's only gonna cost less than 500 bucks, so that gave us the extra money to cover the electrical, because I only budgeted 10,000 for the electrical in the beginning, not knowing what we'd get for estimate, so I would recommend going with Stebbins for $14,824.82.
Make a motion that we approve Stubbin's Electrical for $14,824.82 for the electrical work at the salt shed.
My side vote.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's just get it done.
So, I talked to Tim Rice today from Wilt Paving, and they're currently paving East Hubbard Road, but they're, they're gonna do that, finish the apron up in October, so that, after the lighting and the, and the paving were the last two things left to be done with that, because we're starting, we're getting.
Yeah, we're getting closer.
Yeah, we're getting stone delivered already for mixing with the sand, but salts, prices aren't out yet, so we can't get that, but that's, that's coming.
So, when the salt is delivered, I believe, delivered to our building?
Correct, and everything should be completed at that point, so just putting, packing the salt away and not have to worry about paving the apron and all that kind of stuff.
We still have some stored away?
Yeah, it's been moved already.
It has been?
All the tin air came from Ruby's?
Correct. So, that's been cleaned out, and we're no longer in a lease with Ruby's.
Okay.
Roll around Destiny, so, okay, I have no more questions on that. Let's talk about a single-axle dump truck.
Did you guys vote on it? I didn't write it, if you did, I'm sorry.
We called that question, did we?
I don't think so.
You did vote?
Because I didn't hear Bob say anything either.
I thought we did.
Bob didn't answer.
Bob might be muted.
Bob, can you hear the, for the motion on Stebbins Electrical for the salt shed, did you vote on that?
I did, because I was muted, but I approved of it.
Well, that's an aye, though.
You hear that?
That's an aye?
Yeah, we got you, Bob.
Okay, we got you, Bob.
It's an aye, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, you want to repair the single-axle dump truck, Mike?
Not that I want to. Economically, it's still economically feasible to repair it and keep it on the road, because it's not a great amount of money, but eventually, we're gonna, I'm gonna come to the board with, to get rid of a truck. We got, we got seven trucks, so, which, we, one of the single, the tub-body single-axle is the one I, this, this one right here is the one that Mike Smith drove, that single-axle, and it's in, it's actually in really good shape, he took, really took good care of it and stuff, so it'd be a crime not to, for $2,900, not to, it's not gonna be just $2,900.
It's gonna be $8,790.
Yes, I looked at this first page, but it is more than that, because Evan's doing some of the work on this thing, that, that was on the original quote, so, it's not everything.
We need to have trucks, so.
Is this our oldest truck?
No, the tub-body's actually older, but the other single-axle, but it's the coolant line that runs up and over across everything, and Evan just doesn't have the ability to get in there and get all that stuff out of there, and he, it's at Earl's right now, and he said, like, it's leaking pretty bad, and he's like, I don't want to come across driving it back here, and then have the leaking a bunch of coolant, and we end up doing some damage to the thing, or whatever, so.
So, if we repair this one, you want to keep this one?
And get rid of the tub-body.
Okay.
And just so you're aware, the, that copart that Mark Brown put on there, we sold the skid steer for five grand, I think it was five, and then the, today, the old Chevy 2500 that was the sewer plant, I mean, the transfer station's plow truck, that sold for 8.50.
Wow.
We had a local bid for 7.50, so we made out better by going through copart, but, so, they send the check to us, once it clears, we, they come and get the stuff, and it's out of our yard, so.
Good.
Well, I mean, if this truck's still halfway decent, and we're gonna keep it and use it, then I would make a motion to approve the repair, Earl's Truck Repair Incorporated for $8,790.54.
I'll second.
We're gonna need it for winter time, so.
Yeah, this is, this is gonna be the high end of it, it might be cheaper than that, or less expensive, because Evan can do some of this work, so.
The worst-case number?
That's the worst-case number.
Then we have money in the budget for this? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I know I was kind of hard on them guys on the last meeting about the wood chipper, but this is kind of reasons why I was hard on that, because, you know, 9,000 and 9,000 and 9,000 is gonna add up quick.
I think we're on the same sheet of music with you on that one, I had, I met with both the mechanic and the highway foreman, and we talked about it in great lengths, and I think it was the right call.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not, again, I think it's probably a good piece of equipment to have, but I think we need to make sure everything that we have now is up where it needs to be before we purchase anything else.
No argument from me.
Votes for engine three? Are those the original tires on that truck?
They are, and so the tires are actually in pretty decent shape. They're starting to get a little weather cracking, but NFPA standards, after 20 years, you're supposed to, the tires are supposed to come off the truck. So you got, you know, this is, we've known this for at least five years, probably.
The truck's a 2008, isn't it?
Yeah.
Which one's engine three again?
The red one. The multi, the crew cab, the multi-crew cab.
Yep.
Our primary assault, our primary attack vehicle.
So, but, so we've, we've kind of pushed it off, and the, they looked at it, Heath had somebody in looking at it, and they said, you're, you're, you're starting to get weather cracks on the tires too. So we got, we definitely got our money's worth out of the tires.
Yeah, they're, you know, you know, the advantage is it stays inside most of the time, but.
And that's not going to pass inspection with weather crack tires, so.
So we, we got our money's worth out of it, and I talked to Heath, and, you know, looking at the, at our budget and making sure that we're leaning forward with this one down the other trucks to make sure that we're putting the money away as we need, a little bit at a time, rather than, you know, large, when it comes time to replace the ones on the, on the ladder, that's going to.
That's a lot of tires.
But they did put some new tires on it before we got it, so that's good, it's a good thing.
Well, heaven forbid some, a tire fails while they're going down the road and somebody gets hurt or worse. And especially if it's a steer tire.
So you think Pete's Tire Barn is the, the one to go with?
They are, they, they followed, both them and Ted, what's it now, Ted? What's the Bridgestone dealer?
I saw the Graus. Nope, those are Firestones.
The one next to Dunkin' Donuts on seven.
Beans.
Beans, yeah. So they also do state bid price, and the police, that's where the police go to get their tires, the highway department and the fire department primarily go to Pete's because they deal in the bigger tires and they can change them and do all that stuff. So they, this is state contract pricing. We, we, they did the, the police tires, or the police cruiser tires, they're not, we're not going to beat state price. We try, we, we've looked at this every time, and I, I can't say if Justin did that this time, but we normally have him do it, and just Pete, but especially with Pete's, they're like, we just can't, we can't find. I think when you guys looked at it last time, I can't believe those tires are so.
Yeah, yeah, we were surprised at the price of them. I would make a motion, do I need to make a motion or do we just need to do a purchase order?
We have the purchase order to approve here. What do you think, Mike?
I just, I, we put it on there if there's any discussion, but I just, I just put it in the purchase orders on.
When it's time to approve the purchase orders, I'll throw that to you. Okay? We'll move on to, talk about the painting the highway garage.
Fun. So the board asked me last time to find out what it would cost to reskin that, the building. So I spoke with Bud Carpenter, he got back to me this afternoon, and we're looking at 50 to 60,000 dollars to reskin it. Of course, and I, the, the metal itself is, is bad in some spots, but majority of it's in pretty decent shape. We found the plans to the building. So the building was built in 1972. So we've got our, we definitely, it's stood the test of time for quite a while. We just have some small things to, to repair on it. I'm not sure if it's worth spending the extra, because it was going to cost 19 to 20 to paint it.
Yeah, I think we were just questioning whether or not it was, you know, if it's only $5,000 more to replace it, but I think that's too far out of the range.
And then, I was up there today at the garage and looked at the, where the man door is on the west side. We're going to have to tear the inner wall out, because the studs, whether they're steel or they're wood, I don't know. I'm assuming it's, they're not steel, because the inside part of it's wood, that the wall, it's not ply, it's not sheet rock, it's wood. So it's got to nail to something, and it looks like it's not metal, you know, so it wasn't put on metal, it's, it's wood in there. They're rotted, so you could push the bottom of the whole building out. So I want to get that. I talked to Paul McClure today about that and a few other things, and asked him to look at that. We're probably going to have to tear the wall apart, and I'd rather, if there was extra money there, is to fix the structure itself.
Yeah, before we paint it. Let's make sure everything else is good and then.
So.
I agree with that.
The money's in the budget to paint. I, I think I shared that last meeting, is there's a line on the highway carryover just for painting, and that's where the garage door money came out of. It was, it was garage and repairs, painting and repairs. So we paid $15,000 for the doors out of that, there's still 22,000 remaining in there. So we have the money, it looks like we can fix the building where, wherever it's rotting at the bottom of that, and probably still paint it. They're not going to paint it till next year anyway.
No, let's get the repairs done first, though.
So that's what we're, that's what we're going to focus on and find out just how, you know, like tearing apart an old house, we start tearing it apart and find out there's more problems, so. But that is our focus, but I'll come back to the board, once we figure that all out about the painting, so that we can get on someone's calendar for next year.
That building's a little over 50 years old, so it probably needs some love.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, the, the board approved all those repairs that were made four, five years ago when Paul was still here, Paul Egan, when Lyles had to replace the bottom of all the, the structure itself, the superstructure itself, they had to cut them and weld and.
That's before the doors got done.
Yeah, yep. So, I mean, I think overall, it really could use to be foam insulated, because there's really no insulation in that. Pretty bad. But we, we burn mostly wood. So I told them today, I said, I don't care if you keep it 90 degrees in here, is, because you've burned the wood, but to stay warm, because they, that room that's, the break room is where that wall is bad, and there, there's no insulation in that wall. So it's like, when it gets down to below freezing, that room is really cold and.
Or maybe a couple rolls of insulation before you put the wall back together wouldn't be such a bad idea for that, for that break room anyway.
Well, if you hire McClures to tear that apart, fix it and insulate it, and put it back together, you know they'll do a good job.
So that's our goal, is to check, you know, we're going to tear it apart, we, we talked about the insulation and getting insulated. The only, yeah, so that's, that's our first, that's our 25 meter target.
So at this point, we don't need to take any action other than ask you to continue heading in the direction you're, you're heading.
I just, I wanted to come back to the board with the cost from the metal, like Bud got back to me today, so.
Okay, well, thank you for doing that. Glass recycling.
I was hoping I had some information to, to share with you on this one, but I didn't get a call back from Mr. Sulia over at the MRF, the recycling facility. It's, we're starting to get charged for contamination of glass, and the contamination could be people threw things in there that shouldn't be in there and it's not being picked out, the metal from the glass, you know, the jars, the lids, and the paper. So what I was told was they want it crushed smaller, and they want more of the paper off it. And we looked into this before, like, God, it was, had to be again four or five years ago, to buy the machine to, this is when, remember our crusher, we used to crush it and we used to be able to use it, and the state came down and said, you can't, you can't do that anymore unless you crush it smaller, and you got to get more of the paper off it. So it's a common, sounds like a common theme. And the cost of buying the machine to get the, the labels off it was, it would have taken us like 18 years to make our money back off it.
Isn't that like a 40K machine or something?
Yeah, it was crazy.
A thousand dollars.
And so we put it, we started putting it in the garbage for a while, because our crusher was, was broken. And somebody complained that we were putting glass in the trash, so we ended up putting it in a bin, and we just started bringing it to the recycling facility. Well, we're getting charged with contamination fees right now, and the contamination charges are more than the, if we took it across the scales, garbage. So I asked a question to Brianna Franzone over at Rutland County Solid Waste District, and she, so that she would reach out to Joel Sulia. I wanted to find out if, are they bringing this stuff to Coventry, or are they putting it in rail cars and shipping it out of state? Like, like, I think Bob would agree that they were bringing it to like Pennsylvania or someplace out of state. And I, I haven't got that response back yet. But if they are, if they're not recycling it and it's going into a landfill, then we just should throw it in the garbage. Put it in the, in the, in the demo bins and just bring it as trash, because there's no sense of bringing it to the MRF, pay more for it than going over the scale, and they just bring it to the, the landfill anyway. I don't know if that's true. And so if anybody out in cyber world, I didn't say that they're bringing it there, I'm just saying, I'm checking to see if they are. But it's getting to the point where it's, we don't make any money on recyclables, the only thing that we're making money on right now is metal and electronics recycling. Compost we pay for, we don't charge anything for it. Plastic, cardboard, glass, we don't make any money on it, and we, we don't charge any extra for it. So it's getting to the point where the transfer station's making it harder and harder to be self-sufficient.
We can't get Heath to peel labels and pull the lids off the mason jars.
I'll let you go, if you show him how, he might be able to. So, yeah, so I just wanted to bring it to your attention that, I, I thought I would have something back from the MRF, but I don't have it, so it'll be another discussion, but it's, it's starting to get tighter and tighter of trying to make that place pay for itself and not raise the rates. We raised the rates to accommodate for, so people didn't charge for recycling, we didn't charge for compost, and now we're just, it's getting so tight that there's just no money in commodities anymore. If we wanted to, if we wanted to bail the cardboard and, and make it strictly cardboard, no boxboard, like cereal boxes and all that stuff, we, we might be able to make some money off it, but then you have to buy the baler, you have to have people to do that.
Yeah, labor.
So you have to make sure it's sorted cleanly.
Yeah, we even looked at zero sort. We could go zero sort, and you could throw everything in one bin and let them sort it over at the MRF, and, but it's just, it's cost more. And if, last time I looked into it, it was significantly more, based on the tonnage that we bring. So trying to find ways to cut costs without cutting services and try to keep this thing paying for itself. And Bob asked me a question a couple years ago, how did you make it pay for itself? And the answer was revenues and expenditures are not offsetting, but what we estimate is we underspend the operating budget, which covers the loss in revenues. And I know that the board has been sensitive about increasing the prices. So we've been able to manage it right now, but there's going to come a point, tipping point where, you know, if people want to see the budgets keep getting cut and taking things out of there, there's going to come a point where it doesn't, doesn't pay for itself anymore.
And we have three major expenditures looming at that facility, and we do not have enough funds in the reserve account to cover them.
I, I had that under, I, I don't have my report to you, but I have notes for, to go over, and one of them is that.
Okay, then I'll hold off on that.
That's, that's all, sorry I didn't have the information, but as soon as I have it, I'll pass it on.
Anything else on glass?
That's it.
Errors and omissions.
What do we, do we, I forgot, do we need to just make a motion to approve the errors and emissions?
I believe it's that simple, isn't it, Mike?
Accept it, yeah. And then there was a, a substantial, the one that's on there was Windy Hollow Mobile Home Corporation, or Cooperative, I mean, that was 325,000 dollars. So when you look at what was the, when you voted on the motions on the budget and the grant list, this is going to change the grant list, at least this one, right, just this one is 325,000. So I have to be really kind of now aware of where we're at in the expenditures versus, I'll figure out with Joe, how that 325,000 dollars correlates into.
Set the tax rate for this coming fiscal year.
After you set the tax rate, errors and emissions don't change it. So we still have to come up with that money to pay, you know, we're going to get less in tax revenue off this one particular place, but we still have to pay off the, the original, the original amount.
The ones that have gone up, like the one above it, should.
That will help. It'll help offset.
Very rarely do they go up, though.
Well, our net here is definitely 300K negative, so.
Right now.
Yeah, so I, why don't you just throw in the two span numbers, you know, the parcel numbers?
Yep.
Just to make it clear what we're approving.
Would make a motion to accept the errors and emissions certificate for span number 129-040-10018, and span number 129-040-11036.
Second.
Moved in second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Thank you.
What's today's date? 22nd?
22nd.
So there's a, there's a errors and omissions form, you can sign if you get a chance to get, when you go in the town office, Bob. I don't know who will have it, probably Mary Jo will have it.
Bob, are you back this week?
Yeah, I'll be around the third day.
Okay, I'll, I'll let Mary Jo know that, that you're going to come in and sign that.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
So you and Mr. Chief Mantello would like to be appointed for the emergency management coordinator and director, is that correct?
Yes, correct. This was on the calendar, so Christine put it on here, but we haven't received the forms yet from Rutland Regional Planning Commission. But yes, we both want to be reappointed, so when we get the, when we get the forms, I'll just bring it back for you.
Okay.
I don't have, I don't have this, something for you to sign right now, but it's a one-year term.
You want us to do the motion tonight, then?
You could do it, and then just sign it when we get the form.
I would make a motion to appoint Peter Mantello as the emergency management coordinator for a term, are they one-year terms?
Yeah.
For a term expiring September 30th, 2026. And Michael Jones is the emergency management director for a term expiring September 30th, 2026.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, this might be one of the ones.
Aye.
This might be one of the ones where only, only I have to sign it.
Yeah, I, I can't recall.
Or it could be all five of us.
I think it's all of them on it, but, so also Pete, I'm, I'm no longer going to be the chair of the Rutland Emergency Management Committee. Pete stepped up and he's going to do it, so he's, he'll be the next one. He, he wanted to keep it in Cassleton, so we, we meet typically once a month.
Hey, managers report. Mike, you're up.
All right, I apologize, I, I have the report with me, but I didn't get it to you guys, so I'll hit all the high points. Castle University should be a letter in your, so you saw their response, not real, please, not only that, I sent that thing out two months earlier, and we just got it back.
Where can you go from here?
The board can have, we can have a discussion, I think there has to be a little research done. Right now, nobody, they're not paying any, Johnson, Linden, Randolph, Williston, they're not paying anybody to provide support at this point, so they're, they're not getting any kind of coverage. But pilot money wasn't really, that's above and beyond. I mean, they're saying it's fair, this is, actually, this is from David Berg, the president. He said a compensation based on standardized formula that considers the assessment value of state-owned buildings and local municipal tax rate. This structures is intended to provide fair and consistent reimbursement across the state regardless of community size or location. I don't disagree that the formula was designed for that, but the value of that property, if it were commercial rather than state-owned property, we would be getting probably more tax revenue on it than what the state pays for, for pilot, for the payment in lieu of taxes. But if you look at around other towns, we do get substantially more money, because we have such, we have a university, lots of state land, state park, and two fishing, the conservation camp and two fishing accesses, so we, we're getting 400, almost 500,000 dollars versus Polteny gets like 70,000 or so, I think Mary Jo said, so. We do get a substantial, substantial amount of money, but when we start running after calls that are just one after another, and I'll have Justin pull the call volume for um, I'll have Justin pull the call volume for you. I'm also going to share it with him. He didn't. I, I, I offered to share it with him and he doesn't seem like he really wants to do that. But our call volume for the fire department is exceeding what it was la, all last year. Cause it's the repeat, the same alarms, they're not fixing them and they're being set off or students are burning popcorn at two in the morning. And just so this is on record, and most people know this, but our, our fire department's volunteers and they get out of bed on false alarms night after night after night at two o'clock in the morning and they don't see anything being done by the university to correct the problems. Um, there's going to come a day where people say, "I'm not getting up for this" and then there's a real fire. And then it's just going to put us minutes, minutes and minutes and minutes behind getting, getting this thing attacked. So it's, it's serious enough that with the police, the fire and Castleton first response, our call volume to that university is pretty substantial.
There has been more than two, but I remember getting up and responding to calls at the college on two separate occasions where I figured it was just another, what we call smells and bells. Just another call that really was going to be of no consequence and both of them were real events that really needed us. I mean, out of the hundreds of times I've been up there, there was two that were real. So you never know.
But when the students got back, there was one, um, female student that was doing something with a curling iron that was near the sensors and set it off two days in a row. And again, now, you know, you, you tell them, "Don't do this because this is what's causing it" and they continue to do it.
Yeah, the fire department's been up there quite a few times this year already. Yes, Roy.
Do you have a record of that?
Oh, yes.
Yes, there's a, there's a, that's all documented.
Okay, I see. Uh, can I have the record of your calls up there sent to me?
What I, what I, if you could stop by the PD, Roy, and see Justin, he can run it for all three organizations. Cause otherwise I'm going to get hand, uh, paper copies. Um, so, but Justin can run all of them.
Okay. And can I also have a copy of your letter from the school?
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, you can. So we'll see where we're at, but it didn't seem like there was any interest, any interest at all, like, "Yeah, yeah, we give you some pilot money, go away."
Yeah, don't talk to us anymore.
Cause it, cause it wasn't just the, it wasn't just the, cause I talked to him in my letter about maybe we'll have to start charging per call or you can make an annual donation to help.
No, we're done with donations.
Yeah, we can't do donations either, so.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, you got about as much traction as I thought you would on that, but at least we started the process. Go ahead, Roy.
Did you have a change from when it was Castleton University? Didn't you get a, uh, some type of, uh, fire number, right?
Yeah, they used to give us some money, right?
Yeah, when, when Dave Walk was the president there, um, you know, Heath as the fire chief or Pete, well, he really was the fire chief. Um, they, if he went there and said, "We need some money for something," they usually accommodated that. Matter of fact, they asked for one time, he doubled what they asked for. So, um, it's a, he said, "I can't buy you one, but I can buy you two. If you wait, if you wait till July 1st, I can buy you, um, two."
They, they were historically quite good to us over the years and that's, um, dried up with the regime, with the reorganization and restructuring of Vermont State University, things have changed.
Yeah, Karen Scorfola, when she was president, I approached her, like, her first month on the job and said, "Welcome. Now we're some money." Um, no, I didn't say like that, but, um, she gave us $7,000 and $5,000 for the fire department so they could pay for a live burn at the fire academy and $2,000 to the police to do some, uh, body camera stuff. So, I mean, that was the last time and she's been gone four years.
So in the past, they were quite good to us, Roy, but that's, since they've restructured, that's dried up.
They, they paid to refurbish, refurbish, some of the money to refurbish the old ladder truck.
They did. They've also been quite generous with things when we, way back when we went after the first thermal imager. They kicked off our fundraiser. We had to raise 20,000 or so, 25K, something like that. This was back around 2000 or 2002, something like that. And, uh, they made a, you know, the, Dave Walk was the president and they made a substantial donation. I don't recall what it was, but it was several thousands off that fundraiser.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to go on record with them to realize that these are volunteers. Um, and, uh, e- even if they contributed some money to help pay for training, cause that's all helps for up there, safety of the firefighters. Um, and, uh, you know, that's, that would be just helpful so they can get to those live burns and stuff like that. And which is, didn't seem, the letter just seemed pretty cold.
Yeah, I mean, we're struggling to get volunteers, you know, anyway, and then you got, well, you just got to get up every couple of nights at two o'clock to go up there for nothing. You know, it's not going to really attract them.
I honestly have no idea how many times I got up in the wee hours of the morning to go to that college over the course of 20 years, but it was quite great, you know, enough.
Um, so that was, that was the first thing. Um, I talked about the garage already. The, Mark Brown had asked something about West Castleton, the property up there, there was campers on it. So Pete Mantello, Chief Mantello, uh, we worked with him and I worked with the zoning administrator. A letter was sent to the property owner on West Castleton Road who has a residence in Rutland. Claims he lives in Rutland, but he, there are people that are disputing if that's a, if it's factual or not. So the letter was sent to him. He had seven days to reply. He has not. So I told the zoning administrator, now he's in, now he's not, he's in violation and let's go ahead and start the finding process. And, uh, because the police chief reached out to him, he said, "I want you my property." Said he would meet us out at the road to talk to us, but, um, we wanted to start that by giving a letter to let him know why and stuff and no reply. So, uh, so that's seven days, he's in violation at this point. So another letter's going to go out to him, letting him know that and that we're going to start the finding process. On Austin Lane, one of the camper trailers moved, but I went down there with the, the health officer last week and there's still two trailers down there. So there, uh, the zoning administrator's following up on that.
Where's Austin Lane?
Uh, down by Goddard, oh, Goddard's.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so there was one, the new one was on the left-hand side by the building. Looked like it was being occupied from what we could see. The one on the right-hand side, there was two of them there. One of them's gone and there's nothing running to it. It looks like it's shut up. Um, so nobody's in it, but, um, so we've, uh, we're following up on that and went as well to find out about that. Cause we were told one got moved to Orwell, but the one that seems to be living in, that people were living in is still there. So more to, more to follow once we get that, um, ironed out. Cash at the transfer station. I was, again, I was asked by the staff to approach the select board about stop taking cash at the, um, at the transfer station. Accounting wise, it's, it's our, it's the biggest headache that we have. Checks are pretty simple. They get turned in. We can find the errors easily when there's a check doesn't get entered into the, the daily remittances. Same with credit cards. What we're running into problems is, is day after day after day, we're, we're paying Megan a salary to, um, take care of taxes and part of its transfer station. She spends so much time trying to fix the errors that come back to there. I'm like, she should, she should be processing tax payments so I'm not getting the phone calls that somebody's check hadn't cleared for 30 days rather than chasing around, um, transfer station errors. And that's all revolves around cash. Um, and so it's hard to find the mistake on that because, you know, if the cash is not in the box, where, where a check, you could say, "Oh, we're $20 off and, oh, this, this check didn't get written in there." Or that credit card payment, but cash is a pain in the ass. Um, it's a pain in the ass at the beach and it's a pain in the ass here. So it, it had been brought up to the select board before about doing away with it, but it's, it seems to be like commonplace now. Where people, people are, places aren't taking cash. It would certainly reduce, our auditors have said, cash is the place that you can get from theft easily, uh, because if you don't ring it into the cash register and you slide it in your pocket, and I'm not accusing anybody, I'm talking what the auditors are saying, um, that, that's where you, there's no, there's no real trail to it. So, um, they, from an auditing standpoint, they would love to see us get rid of cash, but, just wanted to bring it to your attention. Like, there's a letter in here. I'll, I'll forward you the email from Christine, um, and Megan expressing their concerns that, um, how much time we're spending, um, trying to find errors and a lot of it revolves around the cash. So.
Is it primarily cash that's used up there?
No, a lot of cards are used. Uh, people are, but they get, they had, they get hit with a convenience fee. So that's, if we could get rid of the convenience fee or somehow build it into our pricing, people wouldn't be so irritated. I guess when you pay, you bring in, uh, $8 worth of trash and you pay with your card and we hit them with a convenience fee. And every, credit cards are different, that their processors, so there's no set amount. But it's just, that's our, that's where our problems lie mostly. And we're, there's a new point-of-sale system, so I've had Joe look into a new point-of-sale system for the transfer station alone, which would, I think, help with some of the errors. It's a, like a grocery store. You know, you go into your, the grocery store and they scan your item. So here you come in, you have a white bag, they have a little gun and they go boop. And it's one, one green sticker, one red sticker, a sheet of stickers, um, that they can, uh, use. It all goes into one system that has a cash drawer versus now they have HayGov, they put it in HayGov, then they go over to the cash register, they got to enter into the cash register. So on busy days when there's people lined up, um, I can see where, I, I've worked up there, so I know that it can get hectic when you're running over to scale, trying to process people coming in, getting their tickets and going across the scale. It could get confusing. Um, so the, this point-of-sale system, we're hoping will, will, not hoping, um, we believe will solve it. So it's about $2,900. Heath's been asking for it since he got there. Joe's been up there and working and he's like, "This is, this is crazy how we do, how we're doing business up there." It's like you're using three different methods to get for someone paying for a sheet of stickers.
It probably wouldn't take long to make the $2,900 back off of not having as much hassle on the other side and as many accounting hours.
And, and that way, one of the things that Joe liked about it is, because it's downloadable so that the accounting procedures, uh, the, the records for the transfer station would be in the computer, not paper ribbons you got to read through and, uh, maybe, because we enter everything into Nemrick. So they do it up there, then Megan has to go through it and then they have to put it to Nemrick. So there's, it's three times people are handling the same $8, you know? So it's a, we're, we're trying to eliminate a, a step out of this and create some more efficiency out of it. But I just want to throw it out there for the, for the, um, the staff has asked me about that.
Just a question.
Mike, Roy has a question.
Hold on, I just made a comment. At the time that this nation goes all cashless is going to be a problem.
Well, whilst we're not trading beads and gold, we're good. Um, but, yeah, it's just, um, I mean, the, the auditors aren't going to give us a bad rating because we take cash. They're just saying it reduces the chance of theft, that's all.
Really?
Is, is it? Wha- what is the difference if I were to have Casella or somebody come get my garbage? Or bring it up to you? Is it going to really cost me that much more?
To, for which part?
To have Casella or some garbage company to pick up my garbage.
Depends on what you, it depends on what they're, um, if you generate two bags a week, um, and you're paying $5 for two bags a week and they're paying $40 or $45 or something for a private hauler, you can kind of look at it in that sense, like get it by a permit, which is, what, $40? And then you gotta have stickers or pay for the bag. So if you do two bags a week, let's say there's four weeks in a month, um, so it's $5 times four, so 20 bucks. It's, it's going to cost you $20 to come to the, uh, the transfer station for that trash, plus your $40 permit divided into, by 52 weeks. You know, so you're talking less than a dollar.
But if you were a family and you had more trash, it might pay you to have the trash person.
I think, I think some, every household has to look at that and say, it, money-wise, not convenience-wise, I'm just talking money, because I can't, we can't sell convenience, but, um, the, uh, or can't charge for convenience, but the, uh, yeah, if I, if I have a large family and you're generating a lot of trash, um, it might be worth it to have it curbside picked up. It's really, you got to figure it out how benefits your family or your household.
My neighbor was just talking to me recently, like last week, and he's considering getting a dump sticker and bringing his trash himself to the dump because Casella's just raised their rate for a monthly rate to, for curbside pickup to $85 a month.
$85 seems like, I would be bringing it to the dump for $85, uh, for curbside.
On what it changed from, I don't know, but he said it just went up to $85 a month. So, and I did a quick little math, mental math, and it cost me somewhere around $120 a year to take my garbage to the transfer station. So, and we're both same, you know, just a couple. We're not, you know, we don't have kids. So it costs, so he's seriously considering.
Yeah, and in some places.
Buying a dump sticker.
I think they have to, and Bob could, I think they have to take recycling now. I don't, I'm not sure if they're forced to, um, if they pick up the trash, do they have to take your recycling? Cause they usually give bins and stuff like that. It comes down to the fact, if you have to get rid of that old chair or that couch or that mattress, you're going to have to bring it to a landfill and then you're going to pay the, the day pass charge and then, and the, whatever the fee is. So again, uh, you know, really have to weigh it out, because convenience does play into it. Like if you don't want to have to go to the dump every Saturday, every Thursday, every Tuesday, maybe it is more convenient for you just to pay for curbside pickup, but that's a personal choice.
That's why you have a sign.
Well, it's, I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Yeah, it's a.
I mean, they're not the only hauler in town, but, and I have no idea what the other haulers charge. But I do know that that's what he told me his was going up to.
I mean, Bob, Bob will probably agree with this one too. Solid waste is, it's getting pretty strict and, but it's costing more and more money to process and get rid of this stuff and they pass the cost on to us. So, um, getting, getting just, just the per ton charge to get rid of it, um, is going up. I, I talked to, um, our haulers and, I mean, uh, facilities who bring it to New York and their rates are going up again. They're not going up significantly. There's still less in Rutland.
It's a business, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, but.
It's not charity.
I mean, those people that are working there cost money too. But the, um, when we take it to New York, we have to pay the surcharge to Rutland County Solid Waste District. Um, whereas if we, we take it to Rutland, it's figured in, but it's more. But when you start figuring in fuel costs, uh, uh, use the FEMA rate for a truck for wear and tear and all that kind of stuff, it's still cheaper to bring it to New York. No matter how you slice it. Um, it's just, our employees are on the road more taking it down there. And we have two employee, or we only have one employee that can drive the truck because it's standard at the transfer station. And then we got the, the highway crew, but going out in New York, they should have their health card for CDL and only one person has a health card. And so, but I, tomorrow I got Evan hauling because he's out sick and he's hauling to Rutland. I said, "I can't send him to New York." So we're gonna, we're gonna take it and we're gonna pay a little more to get rid of it in Rutland, but it's for convenience.
Yeah, we need him doing other stuff too, so.
Yeah, so. All right. Um, any questions about that? Um, the compactor, the old skyline building in Fairhaven, Heath and Evan went and looked at that. It looks like all the parts are there. They talked to Sean Kamara. He, they basically said, "Make us an offer." But I said, "Before we do that, we want to see if they can get the power hook back up to it and make sure it works." But Evan said it's, would, it looks exactly like the one up there ours. So I said, "We need to confirm that." And that way, we have parts, you know, if, if, uh, everything, if the ram broke or something like that. So they're, they're going to go back out and make sure everything, um, would match up. Um, but the worst case is we're talking, we could bring it in during the winter if we bought that for a good, a decent price. Bring it in the winter, sandblast it, paint it, and we would have something that's newer than ours.
Yeah.
And ours could become.
The parts machine.
The parts, uh, the donor. So, um, we're gonna, we want to be able to see it run. So that's what they're working on right now. Make sure at first that the parts are, would be compatible to be a donor. Uh, ours be a donor to that one, um, and then we'll look at cost. It's, it's probably going to be a lot cheaper than buying a new one.
You want me to make him an offer? I like making offers.
Well, the offer that I, that was, that mechanic gave me today would, I'd be like, "Ooh, that'd be a good offer." So, um, looking at the, especially the budget, uh, or the reserve. So more to follow. But no, I, I'd rather have you not make the offer. Just to answer your question, but thank you. And then, um, Mark Brown said he was going to contact the, the old, people at the old mall.
Yeah, that one's probably going to be cheaper.
Yeah, I know, had to kick out the unhoused. All right, uh, the RF, the request for qualifications, um, and proposal for the sewer infrastructure assessment was sent to Aldrich Nelly after the last meeting, made, met with Russ and, um, so that's sent to them to make sure that it's a good, where everything that we need done is going to be done by that RFP. So I, I should have that back for the October meeting for your consideration. Paying on East Harbor and Road, uh, is, uh, I met with, they were there, started Friday. And I had, um, Jeff and his, or one of his, um, folks up there taking tickets and checking temperatures uh, to make sure that the product that we. to make sure that the product that we, this, by the contract, it's, the temperatures are correct. Because a low temperature could cause early degradation of the, of the product, it's not gonna compact as well. So they've been up there, they're up there today, and they, I talked to Tim, and it's supposed to rain or on and off this rest of this week, so he said, depending on the weather, that they plan on being done this week, but weather dependent. And East Harborton Road will be completed. If you haven't ridden up there, our crew, Mike, led by Mike Smith, they did a really good job with the ditching and the culvert replacements. They found four culverts that were not on our culvert inventory on that road. So, so now they're, they're, they've been fixed or repaired and did ditch so the water goes into the culverts, because some of the culverts, water wasn't even getting into them.
Well, if you don't know they're there, then.
Yeah, but even the ones that they knew, just the way that over time, sediment and all that kinda stuff built up, water wasn't getting into the culverts. So they did a really good job up there. They're on, they're on Moscow. They started today, they got the hammer working on the, that new hammer we bought, that's on the backhoe, and that's working. That was a, that was a challenge for our mechanic, because it was written, the instructions were written in Chinese, and he doesn't speak or read Chinese. But it wasn't turnkey, because cat couplings and what they sent with the machine, we had to get stuff made to, but it was still a lot, a lot less expensive than the alternative.
So Evan learned Chinese that quick and got it done, huh?
He did.
I knew he could do it.
But so, they, they got it up there, they, they tested it, and it didn't vibrate apart, and they brought it up.
It does what they needed to do?
Well, I don't know that. They, when they tested it, it didn't blow apart. So when they, they were up there today, they were gonna, Mike was ditching in, in the area where the ledge was, and he said, find that spot where I need it, and we're gonna try it. And he's gonna do the initial work, because he knows how to use it, and he'll train the others, because if you don't keep constant pressure on that point, it will blow, the machine will tear itself up.
Yeah.
So he's, you, the board asked, you remember that conversation we had about that employee? So that's all been resolved. Yes, I'm being cryptic, but it's a personnel issue, so, but anyway, it's been resolved. What you guys asked for, it's done.
Good, it's getting done.
That's pretty much it. And barring your question, I have, I'll send you the report or print out copies and leave them in the box, but the projects, Dick is on the steering committee for the sidewalk project, and I still, I still owe Nidia, Nidia, the, that layout, I gotta, it's been my fault, no excuse, just gotta get it to her, so Stephanie Burke can do her thing.
Any questions for Mike?
No, the Hubbardton people find it very inconvenient that you've torn off that road. Now they have to go out by Route 30 and come down, so they don't have to go through that construction.
Well, I'll tell you, oh, sorry. If, if I were to get in that line and wait for my timed for the one lane, it would take me longer to go around. And I know people don't like it, but in time-wise, it would be longer from the driveway around, but that's up to their choice.
It's a short-term inconvenience.
It's a Hubbardton problem, and Hubbardton people, they're complaining.
Well, they'll have a nice road to drive on soon.
That's when we put those signs up there on that road, where, because that's up there, on that nice new strip, that's where we're gonna see how fast they can get that display up.
We can get it to flash red.
Oh, sorry, I met with, again, with Tim Rice from Wilk. I wanted to go in executive session, talked about some contract stuff, but I had him measure the parking lots and stuff for resurfacing these, so I'll have that, he said by the end of the week, so next meeting, I'll, I'll give you an idea of what it's gonna cost to resurface these parking lots and fix them. And then the, when they tear up that basketball court for that stormwater project, we're already maxed out on the grant, so normally they have to bring it, the ground back to its original condition, but because we've already maxed out the grant, to resurface out there and put basketball courts and the pickleball courts out there, it's on, it's on us to do that, because we've maxed out the grant. We met with Farnham's, Fabians, about the catch basin in front of the library. There's a long stretch without, and that water ponds there, so we wanted to put a catch basin in there, that was part of that stormwater planning, and that would run from there west over to the, the one that comes off from Elm Street, or I mean Seminary Street, they would just hook into that. But the money that was allotted to that for ARPA was, I think it got downgraded to like sixty grand, but it sounds like we're gonna be able to do it for a lot less, but we have to fix that Cobb job over on Elm Street that Heath and Mike put together for us to Band-Aid it. So I think we'll still be under budget there too, so there might be some money left over from that.
That wasn't a Cobb job, that was a short-term emergency repair.
Yeah, yeah.
That's gotta last the next ten years.
Yeah, when he said, he looked at me, he goes, Mike, everything you say is three years. It's gotta last three years, the truck, the ram, whatever.
A short-term emergency repair.
The, the, I'm sorry, the, the T and T, the truck is, they said about two weeks, the Chevy 6500 should be done.
So we'll have it for this year?
We'll have it for this year, the chute's on the, the new tandem. Evan had to do a little fabrication, but that's on there, and it goes on October 1st for, to be registered, we gotta go to Rutland to register it, so it'll be registered on the 1st.
That'll be functional this winter as well.
It will be functional this winter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Purchase orders?
Would make a motion to approve purchase order number 054435 to Pete's Tire for the sum of three thousand nineteen dollars and fifty-seven cents for tires for the fire truck, was it engine three?
Yes.
I second it, but my sheet says fifty-two cents.
Sorry, fifty-two cents. It appears their pen stopped writing.
Well, it's fifty-two cents.
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to approve purchase order number 054503 to Ray Bean Tire for the sum of two thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars, and that's for the winter tires for the police department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Make a motion to approve purchase order number 054430 to Waste Quip for the forty-yard open-top bin for the transfer station for the sum of seventy-three hundred dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you give that to Nick?
Aye.
Thank you.
Ready for purch, or warrant?
Warrant.
Make a motion to approve purch, or warrant, number 0908A for the sum of nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. Warrant number 0919 for the sum of fourteen thousand three hundred and five dollars and ninety-three cents. Warrant number 0922 for the sum of one million nine hundred and forty-eight thousand one hundred and six dollars and nine cents. Warrant number 0911P for the sum of twenty-two thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty cents. And warrant number 0904P for the sum of nineteen thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Second.
Say that last number again?
Nineteen thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents.
The document I have here says eighty-eight cents. Are you, yeah, I think the cover sheet is in error, so if you could amend your motion to nineteen thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents?
I will make a motion to amend my warrant so that it reads that we would approve warrant number 0904P for the sum of nineteen thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Second.
This is, still not working.
Yeah, I got.
Is what I have here, the original document?
Yeah, the original I got is what that one is, is 0918P for nineteen seven forty-nine eighty-eight, and the new one that just got handed out was the one that was.
Yeah, this, here, Rob, here, do, go ahead and make your, amend your motion to, because that's the warrant we have to approve, right there.
This one right here.
So the warrant number's on the front?
Yep. We'll make a motion to appro, this is the final one?
Yes.
Okay, motion, or motion to approve warrant number 0918P for the sum of nineteen thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? The big one, by the way, is for the school.
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm confused, I'm confused about this one.
The cover sheet's in error.
Yeah, okay, because the, because the two that I have, they're weighing, the one for the school is a hundred thousand dollars off on the, the two I have. Do you, do you have that in your pocket, this one here?
We double check, don't even look at that for a second. Um, hang on.
It's supposed to match the warrant.
So that one's good. I was looking at the warrants themselves as Rob was reading them off, and warrant number 0922 is for one million nine hundred and forty-eight thousand one hundred and six dollars and nine cents. So your motion was correct, Rob.
Mm-hmm.
So did I call that question yet? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I think we have it right.
It's quite a stretch to go from nine dollars and ninety-nine cents to one million nine hundred and forty-eight thousand one hundred and six dollars and nine cents.
It's not that high.
Well, that's the first, that was the only time I've seen a warrant.
Well, the comment is that we need to be sure that these cover sheets are correct.
And this is the, usually Penny does them, Joe did this one, so he didn't, he had to learn how to do them, so.
Better reprimanda.
Won't see him the next week, he'll be gone.
I know when Joe's predecessors stopped doing them, and Penny started doing them, there was some tribulations, and then Penny had it down. And Penny's made an error in quite some time, so we'll be understanding with a learning curve.
Yeah, he was off that, on Friday, had to call him back in to do the warrants.
Well, we got through it.
That's the worst that we have to deal with.
Lookboard comments, Rob?
I don't think I have anything.
Mary?
Thank you, Mike, for getting this list of appointees and whatever.
No, we have to update it.
We do have to get some more people on the rec.
We have two people, just, sorry to cut you off, are you done? Sorry, I got a little excited about it. I have two more people that wanna be on the rec commission, so I gotta talk to Martha about it still, but two, what I would say are quality people.
Oh, that, that reminds me of something, I do have something. Did we hire a rector actor?
A conditional letter of hire was gonna go out today, but I talked to the guy, and he wanted to hold off. He's coming here Wednesday to check out the area, make sure it's, because he, he's having a hard time finding housing. And so we, I couldn't put a start date in the conditional or hire, because it's all conditional on him getting residents up here. So I've, I've linked him up with a couple different, well, not one, one realtor, Nancy, Nancy Libatore, and he's doing his own searching, but he can't find housing.
Where's he from?
Connecticut. So he, I sent a letter to all the staff, and said, if you know anybody renting a place or whatever, please let me know, and I'll pass it on to him. But he lives in Connecticut, has a, had a great pedigree, unanimous by the, the search committee on this person, and number two is right, I mean, if this were to go south, number two is just as good, and so.
We do have some rental availability in this building here for.
That's gonna be for the fire district. They're gonna set up camp in here. So, yeah, so, uh, once, once again, what's that?
They have to live in Castleton?
There's no residency requirement. He prefers to live in Castleton, so he's, you know, he prefers to live close, this area right here. He found, there was someplace on, he asked me a question, he said he found a place, but he said, is it, is there a lot of college parties and noise in the village area? And I'm like, they roll the sidewalks pretty much, dude, at dark. There's only a couple, I told him the streets that, where the, you know, there might be a little bit more issues, but he's looking. He accepted it for what we were offering, for the wage. So it's, it sounds like, I've, I've communicated him, communicated with him a lot over the last, you know, four days, so very, very responsive to phone calls and emails.
Good.
Has a great, all, all the stuff that we wanted to find in a rec coordinator, he brings to the table.
Perfect.
To include, he's ran four different rec programs, like Hey My Rec and all those, so he's well-versed in that stuff, he's, I think he'll.
Be okay?
I think he'll do well.
Good. We'll see what happens.
Yeah, and if it doesn't work out, then we did a search committee, and they all share in the responsibility of that.
Yeah, so nobody to blame or finger pointing on that one.
Oh, yeah.
All right, and, Mary, you, you have said you had, Bob, do you have anything? You said you were okay, right?
I'm perfect.
So am I, so let's move on, Anything for Action items, I think we're pretty low maintenance this month, or this week.
I do have, I had a note for the sewer.
Yep.
To give Matt Brown a heads up.
Yep.
And then put on thirty minutes for the next meeting agenda, and one of the discussions will be pump stations, who's, you know, who owns it, who maintains it, kinda thing, so.
From a slugboard point of view, I think we got a pretty light lift this month, or this week.
Yeah, so I got, for the bid review for Depot Terrace, we put the bid off, because I'm gonna have to contact Aldridge and Elliott tomorrow, just know that it got put off till the first meeting in October, that's all.
That still meets their window for their bid. So we need an executive session?
Uh, please for contracts.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Night, Mom.
Bye.
Love you. I move to find that premature general public knowledge regarding the contract matter at hand would put the board at a substantial disadvantage because the sensitive nature of the contract negotiations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we enter into executive session to discuss the contract matter under the provisions of Title I, Section 313a1a of the Vermont statutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 We're in executive session with the board and the town manager.